We appreciate your willingness to serve the city of Brisbane. Before we get started, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters, the City of Brisbane, the Peninsula TV for their assistance this evening. Recordings of tonight's events will be available afterwards in both English and Spanish on the city's YouTube channel and will be played on Channel 27. As a reminder, the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce is a non-political organization and does not support or endorse any candidates. Rather, we seek to provide our members and the community at large with the information they need to make informed decisions. With that, I would like to introduce Anne Cutchins from the League of Women Voters, who will go over the protocol for this evening.
Welcome to our candidate's night. First, I have some announcements. Please turn off your cell phones or silence them so that the candidates are not interrupted when they speak. To keep a neutral and fair atmosphere, the candidates agreed to our policy that no literature, clothing, or other material associated with a candidate's campaign is permitted in the room. I am Anne Cutchins, a member of the League of Women Voters of North and Central San Mateo County. Thank you to the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce for sponsoring this forum tonight. We appreciate their interest and efforts in presenting events that increase voters' knowledge about the candidates and issues. The League of Women Voters is a national nonpartisan volunteer organization. We welcome people of all genders. Our education mission is to encourage your active and informed participation in the government at every level. The League does not endorse candidates or political parties. Our sole interest is in helping voters gain fair and unbiased information to make an informed decision on or before the election day. The purpose of a candidate forum is to provide an opportunity for all the candidates to be heard at one time and to be questioned by you, their potential constituents. Bringing the candidates and voters together face-to-face enables voters to be better informed about their election decisions. Thank you for coming out to learn more about the candidates and ask some questions. Although I must say, we do have a lot of questions already. Tonight, you will hear from candidates for the Brisbane City Council. There are three candidates for two seats. The term of office is four years. Again, this event provides a nonpartisan setting for the voters to hear all the candidates. It is not for the supporters or opponents of any particular candidate in the audience to demonstrate their own views and preferences. So please, keep any expression of disdain or delight to yourselves for now. Also, please hold your applause until the end of the forum, when we will thank all of the candidates. The candidates in alphabetical order are Madison Davis, Terry O'Connell, and Anthony Walker. The rules for the forum are as follows. Opening Statements: Each candidate will have three minutes for an opening statement. Question Period: During the question period, each candidate will have one minute to answer. All candidates will have an equal time to speak to the question, even if the question is addressed to only one candidate. Closing Statements: Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. Our timekeeper is Betty Fleming. Betty will hold up warning signs when the candidate has one minute, then 30 seconds left of the allotted time. At the end of the time, Betty will hold up the stop sign until the candidate quits speaking. For the candidates, you may finish your sentence, but please don't go on for a paragraph, or two, or three. Ushers: Questions from the audience will be in writing. The ushers have cards for you to write down your questions. Raise your hand, and someone will bring a card and pencil to you. Please write legibly, and try to keep your questions brief. Questions of a personal nature and personal invective will be out of order. Our ushers are Linda Jansen and Susie Ray. Raise your hand if you need a question card, or when you are ready to have an usher pick up your question. For those of you viewing this forum via YouTube, you can submit questions to questions@lwvncc.org, and you should see that at the bottom of your screen. That's questions@lwvncc.org. All questions come to the moderator, that's me, and I will sort the questions by subject and will cover a variety of topics. We seldom have time to ask all questions, and I may need to rephrase or combine questions at times. So, Opening Statements: The candidates have drawn lots to determine the order in which they will speak. Each candidate has three minutes for the opening statement. We will now begin. Our first candidate is Madison.
Hi, my name is Madison Davis, and I am honored to be here before you today as a City Council candidate. As a lifelong resident, I am fortunate to call Brisbane my hometown. I attended Brisbane Elementary School and Litman Middle School, and I'm a graduate of San Francisco State University with a degree in Business Administration. I spoke at my first City Council meeting at four years old, back when they used to be held at the Community Center. This experience helped establish my passion for public service. I'm a former Brisbane Parks and Recreation Commissioner and have been on the Brisbane City Council for the last seven years. I served as Mayor of Brisbane in 2019, and am the youngest woman elected in Brisbane's history. Serving you for the past seven years has been my pride and joy. During this time, I have been able to introduce the Lunifest Film Festival to Brisbane, which has generated $119,000 in scholarships for Brisbane women. With my colleagues, I have developed the Parkside Plan, addressed concerns regarding short-term rentals, enhanced and expanded after-school programs for BES and Litman, advocated for Brisbane's right to self-determination, met lofty climate action goals, and worked to preserve sensitive habitat on San Bruno Mountain, all while staying fiscally prudent. These issues are just a fraction of what I have worked on during my tenure. In my role as a council member and mayor, I learned the importance of keeping an open mind and considering all comments carefully. I listened to understand, not respond, which has enabled me to embrace new ideas and viewpoints. Tackling the challenges before us at the Baylands not only requires a council member who knows the subject matter thoroughly, but a council member who has proven their ability to listen and act upon your vision. Despite what others may want you to believe, the work at the Baylands is just beginning. We have not solidified a specific plan, and no remediation has taken place. On the school Two-by-Two Subcommittee, I've had several conversations with Jefferson Union High School District about a possible high school on the site. Initially, they were not open to the idea, but after much convincing, they have agreed to explore the option. The city is suing high-speed rail, and while we are hopeful we will win, we by no means have it in the bag. Winning this will take a precise strategy. Today, I am standing before you, asking for your vote, not because I have my sights set on a political career or want some sort of prestige, but because I have deeply cared about Brisbane for as long as I can remember, and I have the experience to serve Brisbane well. Thank you for being here, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Terry.
Thanks to everyone for coming out tonight, and to the chamber, and the League of Women's Voters, and the city for hosting this event. I'm Terry O'Connell, and I've been serving on the Brisbane City Council since 2011. I moved to Brisbane in 1991 and instantly fell in love with this small town. I started meeting people and started volunteering. I served on the Brisbane Dance Workshop Board, and I served for San Bruno Mountain Watch on their Board of Directors. I found a role in activism for environmental causes and then realized I could have a bigger impact as a council member. So in 2011, I ran for council and was fortunate enough to be elected by the people of Brisbane. During my time on the council, Brisbane has seen significant growth out at Sierra Point and has come closer to seeing Baylands remediation and development plans outlined, but we're far from being over with that process. I've had opportunities to work with my co-council and staff on many projects, including the Parkside Plan, the new library, addressing infrastructure needs, climate resiliency, and revitalization of our Brisbane Marina, all the while being aware of our financial ups and downs and realizing where our priorities must lie. Brisbane has also been able to purchase several acres during my years on the council and save them for future generations, and has outpaced San Mateo County and the state in greenhouse gas reductions. But there is so much more that we can still do and needs to be done. Brisbane needs to protect ourselves from outside interests that do not have the livability of Brisbane as their goal. I would like the opportunity to continue to serve Brisbane as a council member and respectfully ask for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final candidate is Anthony.
Good evening, and thank you to the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, and all of you watching at home and here in the room. I'm Anthony Walker, and I'm running for Brisbane City Council. As a parent of two girls in our local public schools, not a day goes by when I'm not thinking about how fortunate we all are to be living in this safe, idyllic community together. What motivated me to run is a strong desire to ensure that their future and ours maintain a vibrant, sustainable connection with the environment and one another that sets us up to thrive well into the future. I will work with our community to formulate creative solutions to deal with affordable housing, promote sustainable zero-carbon development, address our water supply and demand issues, and bring down costs, protect our open space, and leverage smart city planning to help all of Brisbane be more walkable, more bikeable, safer, and more connected as we grow. And I will take a proactive role in dealing with the effects of climate change. Thinking of climate as one niche issue is, among many, just doesn't cut it anymore. It connects to every other issue we face and is the existential crisis of our time. And importantly, we may be the last generation that's able to do something about it. Incremental tweaks to the status quo won't get it done, so it's imperative that we work together and take swift decisive action now to confront it. The broader transition is already underway. As a nation, we are right at the beginning of a massive shift toward the clean renewable future we all need to see. With the passage of the Inflation Reduction Act at the federal level and a bevy of new climate legislation at the state level, we may well have just bought ourselves the decade in funding and support. But ahead of us is a massive infrastructure challenge. Simply put, how much fossil fuel machinery can we replace with all-electric machinery, and how quickly? The challenge is great, but it is also an unprecedented opportunity to modernize, update, and improve the standard of living for all members of our community using the technologies we have available today. Brisbane must stand ready as a proactive local partner in all solutions that will make this transition work for our community. I will be your representative, ensuring that you have a voice, are informed and empowered to participate fully, that Brisbane gets its fair share of assistance, and is leveraging every resource at our disposal to execute quickly on impactful solutions to our local issues. Let's step into the future together, building a stronger, more connected, more resilient Brisbane for every member of our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, it is time for the candidates to answer your questions. If you have not written your question, please do it now. Raise your hands so that the ushers can pick up your written questions. An email address for online questions is questions@lwvncc.org. Each candidate will have one minute to answer the question. I will vary the order in which the candidates are called on to speak. If a question is addressed to a particular candidate, that candidate will be asked to answer first. The other candidates may respond, but only if they wish. So the first question will go to Madison first, and the question is, why do you want to be on the Brisbane City Council, and what would be your most important priorities if elected to the Brisbane City Council?
Well, first and foremost, I love Brisbane with all my heart, and I think I've been able to make a positive impact in our city so far. I want to return to the council to finish the job I've already started. I've listened to the community regarding their vision for the Baylands. I've spent countless hours studying the EIR and high-speed rail documents, and I want to be able to apply all of this knowledge that I've gained in my two terms on the council. I want to be able to ensure that the developer is held accountable, as well as regulatory agencies, and that we get the Baylands right. I want to advocate for us in our most critical point in history, and these are my biggest priorities to answer the rest of your question. We have to get this right. We don't have the opportunity to fail, and we need to make sure that we don't end up with a high-speed rail maintenance yard.
Thank you. Anthony?
So, as I laid out in my opening statement, my biggest priority really is the future for our community members and our children. So my biggest priority is to do everything we can to leverage the resources that we'll have, thanks to the Inflation Reduction Act. And there will be many, but I think that there will be a communications challenge as well, getting that information out to the public, and making sure that everyone has all of the resources that they need to fully participate in the transition will be crucial. Beyond that, water security is very important to me. Our community is already very water-stressed, California is, and I think there are some interesting solutions on the table for us there, as well as smart city planning to connect every part of the city as we grow.
Thank you. Terry?
I'd like to be re-elected because I'd like to finish some of the work that I've started, and I also want to ensure that the city meets its financial obligations. The Baylands is a huge project that has so many opportunities, but it also has so many risks. The biggest risk, of course, is high-speed rail and the amount of available land that it would take and would really change whatever sustainability could happen out there. And we also need to worry about how much the infrastructure and the police, fire, and other city services are going to cost. Measure JJ ensures that the development needs to be neutral financially to the city, but we really need a watchdog to sit there and make sure that that really happens. So that would be my priority on my term. Thank you.
Thank you. The next question will go to Anthony. California is currently experiencing active water issues that aren't showing signs of letting up as the city grows. As the city grows, our water system will be under increased stress. What are some solutions you think you could help Brisbane make sure there is enough to go around?
Thank you for that question. So California is experiencing very serious water issues, and that doesn't seem to be going away. You know, there are many inefficiencies in our water system currently. It's definitely very stressed, but I do think that there are some really interesting solutions on the table. One really key solution is, I think, a gray water treatment facility that we could use for watering plants for irrigation, that sort of thing. There are also interesting devices that have just been hitting the market, point-of-use gray water treatment systems that can be installed in homes, that can be used to flush toilets and also for irrigation. There are also hydro panels on the supply side that can be installed to actually produce drinking water for homes, so I think all of those things together could help quite a lot.
Thank you. Terry?
Well, as everyone knows, water is gold in California, and it is getting more and more valuable and more and more scarce. Brisbane has done a lot to curtail its usage. Right now, we are way lower in usage than most urban areas, and every drop counts. We need to find the solutions for our outside watering, whether that be rain barrels, low-flow toilets, other solutions that we can handle our own, and then we need to look for the county and the state so that we can find other ways to recycle and reuse our water. Thank you.
Thank you. Madison?
I don't know if you all know, but here's a fun fact. Brisbane is actually one of the lowest per capita water users in all of San Mateo County, so we have a great record, and I'd like to see us maintain that and even improve upon it. We already participate in regional water conservation programs by offering rebates for high-efficiency washing machines and toilets. I think we can do a better job at promoting that to the public and also providing rain barrels or helping to finance rain barrels. We can implement stricter guidelines to conserve potable water by collecting, storing, and utilizing rainwater for outdoor use. We can also crack down on watering landscapes and requiring drought-tolerant plants and water-efficient irrigation. That's something that we can do, but I'm sure there's always room for improvement. At City Hall, we actually have a rain garden and a bioswell that captures water from the roof, so I think it's all about reduction as much as possible and conservation, and I know we have a great team with our OSAC Committee and with Adrian Ethererton, the Sustainability Manager, to help us come up with some creative solutions.
Thank you. The next question will go to Terry first. How do you plan to address the city's housing needs, especially low-income housing requirements?
Thank you. Housing is always going to be a tough issue in California with the high cost of building and the high cost of land. With the council and Councilmember Davis, I worked on the Parkside Plan, which was a plan to utilize existing real estate here in Brisbane in this actual area that would utilize and make low-income and affordable housing available. Due to lack of developer interest, that has not gone forward yet, but we are always hopeful that there will be incentives for that. We also have another plan that was approved twice now for Behind the 23 Club, and again, due to lack of developer interest, that has not been started.
Thank you. Madison?
I plan to address the challenge creatively. We only have so many locations in central Brisbane that would work for higher-density housing developments. One site that could be suitable would be the Bank of America parcel that the city just acquired. We could partner with MidPenn or Habitat for Humanity to construct the units. We could maintain a commercial unit on the ground floor, like a credit union, and use the top two floors for housing. Of course, this would require a robust community outreach and engagement session to make sure that this is something that the community actually wanted. Also, we have to hold the developer accountable at the Baylands. We have such a big opportunity there, and I think we can build many affordable housing units that will serve future residents of Brisbane.
Thank you. And Anthony?
Yes, so I think that the biggest opportunity for affordable housing really is in the Baylands. We're talking about doubling, potentially tripling, the size of the city at that point, and that, I think, is one of the biggest spots. I would like to see us utilizing as many other locations as we can. I think the Bank of America location is a good one. I think there's also potential to leverage SB9 for duplexes and split lots, allowing local homeowners to split up their lots and put multiple homes on a single lot, or what used to be a single lot. I think there's a lot of opportunity to build out in places that we haven't leveraged quite yet, but there's no question that housing is definitely a concern in the Bay Area. It's much too expensive, and we've got to do something about it.
Thank you. The next question will go to Madison. What are your plans for empty properties in Brisbane? How could we utilize these properties for community benefit?
Well, I think you have to address what kind of property it is first. We do have a really big problem with empty commercial properties, and I feel like that contributes to blight in our community. I'd like to see the Economic Development Subcommittee work on how we can incentivize property owners to rent out those properties. At the same time, I do believe, especially for residential, that people have a right to do what they want with their property as long as it's not impacting their neighbors. And I don't know that having a bunch of vacant homes in Brisbane really is a real issue, but I know on the commercial side it is, and I want to work on that.
Anthony?
So, yeah, I agree that these vacant properties are not a good use of funds. I'd like to see, the Bank of America site is one good example. I'd like to see more transparency around what is going on with sites like that. I think community input will be needed to guide any final plan, but anything that went in a spot like that, I'd love to see it maintain the city's character, be a sustainable zero-carbon development, and hopefully there would be attractive shops, market, and maybe housing above, right? I think there are many things that could be done with these types of vacant properties to connect the city much more effectively and create more of a robust central shopping area.
And Terry?
Since the question didn't address whether it was housing that was empty or if it was commercial buildings that were empty, I do agree that individual property owners, for a variety of reasons, may have vacant homes, whether they're going through transition or remodeling, or just a change in family dynamics and financials. As far as the businesses, many of our businesses that are on Main Street that are vacant are too small to be viable for most commercial enterprises, so we're really looking at niche tenants there. As far as the shopping center, it may be that the city is going to need to be more forceful and initiate a tax that would penalize businesses that remain vacant. So it's a hard thing to say when you don't know which property they're talking about, but we would need to get creative to learn a creative solution.
The next question goes to Anthony. If you found extra money in the city budget, where would you spend it and why?
Well, so in my case, I would want to put it toward electrification updates, and I would love to see a Brisbane Climate Fund, something along those lines, to help out low-income or fixed-income residents make the transition that really needs to happen, because I think we really need to do everything we can to bring everybody along. And initially, anyway, these things are not going to be... And initially, anyway, these things are not going to be necessarily easy for everyone to afford.
Thank you. Terry?
Oh, if we had a wish list. Personally, I think that one of the biggest things that we need to do with some extra money, there's two. If it's available, I'd love to see acres purchased. But in the lack of available purchasing of acres, I would want to pay down our debt. We have a huge pension obligation debt that is looming over us and all of the future of Brisbane. And so if we don't get that under control and make sure that it doesn't take us over, we'll be in deep trouble. So I would say it should go down to paying down our debt.
And Madison?
Thank you. I love this question. I think this is a process question, truly. You have to look at the city's finances first and foremost. Are we in a recession? Are we approaching a recession? Do we have a rainy day fund? You need to consider those things before you determine how you're spending money. You also need to evaluate, well, how much money is it? Because that makes a huge difference. If I have $10,000 versus $1 billion, I can accomplish very different things. As well as, we need to evaluate our unfunded liabilities, too. So if we were in a good financial position, I would analyze how much we had, and then I would review our list of capital improvement projects. We have a prioritized list already of capital improvement projects. I would look at how much each of those items costs and what would yield the highest benefit, and that's where I would try to apply the money.
Thank you. The next question goes to Terry. Do you believe there is a division between the folks that live in central Brisbane and the folks that live on the ridge? If so, what have you done or what would you do to help bridge this divide?
I think when the ridge was first proposed for development, and while it was under construction, there was a divide between us and them. And I think that over time, as people have moved in and the scars of the development have lessened, that so has that divisiveness. I think that we have members of our commissions and committees that live in the ridge. We have had members of the city council that live at the ridge, and I think that they have integrated fairly well and feel part of the community now. It's taken some time, but I think through attending events and community things that they have really learned, and we have learned, that they're not any different than us. They still care about Brisbane and about the mountain.
Thank you. Madison?
I perceive us as all one Brisbane. And I agree with the comments Terry made about how initially, I think, there was, it took a while. It took a while for people to come around to this new development. But I couldn't imagine Brisbane without the ridge. And there are so many friends that I've made that live there, and they are such vital members of our community. And so I think it's all about continuing to embrace and engage and making sure we're doing a good job at letting people know that we have positions open on our commissions and committees, how to get involved in Brisbane. I think it's about having more community events, like Day in the Park and our concert series. That brings people together, and that's how you build community. And as well as, you know, enhancing our schools, and schools and children also bring people together.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yes, this is a great question. I believe there is a divide. I've heard that sentiment echoed by residents of the ridge while I was canvassing. And, you know, I think that this is something that we need to think about as a city very carefully. You know, I think we have some remote, pretty divided parts of the city. And that's going to become, you know, continue to be an issue as we build out, for example, the Baylands. It's, you know, separated by a pretty clear highway there. Creating those connections between all parts of Brisbane, making it feel like a more connected, cohesive community, I think, is going to be vital as we move forward, you know. And I'd like to see it done through, you know, smart city planning, making things more walkable, more bikeable, and more physically connected.
This question on climate will go to Madison first. Has Brisbane done a thorough risk assessment and adaptation plan to address climate change? What would you do to help versus prepare?
Well, we have, I think, a very robust climate action plan that Open Space and Ecology worked diligently on. It is, it's very thorough, and I think that we need to double down on the goals that we've set for ourselves. In the plan, we talk about, you know, increasing energy storage, minimizing energy demand. It's got sections on efficiency, conservation, substituting carbon, carbon energy for renewables. And so I think that there's a lot there. Of course, the Baylands is ripe with opportunity of what we can do to have a zero-net energy development there. And, yeah, I think that we take this seriously. I think that we put in the effort and we reap the rewards, and it's something that I think that we will continue to do, and I'm committed to continue doing.
Anthony?
Yes, thank you. So the climate action plan is thorough. If, you know, I think it could be a bit more ambitious, but I realize it was written as a living document meant to be updated over time. But my concern is urgency. The climate action plan was drafted in 2015, and, you know, we got around to declaring a climate emergency in 2021. That's about six years. We've only got about seven years left at this point before 2030. Our climate emergency declaration calls for 66% greenhouse gas reductions by 2030. That's right around the corner. That's, you know, technically eight years, but we're well into year eight. We've got, you know, a few months left. So if we're going to do it, I think we've got to be very aggressive and really get after those goals.
Thank you. And Terry?
So Brisbane has worked extensively on our climate action plan. While it has expired and we needed to declare an emergency, it is because we cannot have the climate action plan be in opposition of what happens at the Baylands, because we need that to be a zero-net energy. So we have to make sure that we don't put in items that can't be achieved through the Baylands. And when we get to the Baylands and knowing what specifically is done out there, we need to have as many opportunities for solar, wind, bio generation, and really make it the toughest we can. We also have really extensive reach codes that go beyond most cities in the county and the state. So we're doing what we can, but until people build it, it doesn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you. This question will go to Anthony. Brisbane is a very car-centric town. Do you have any plans for making Brisbane more walkable, bikeable, and with better connection to public transit options?
Yes, so I think the trick with that, you've got to make sure that you're making safe pathways for bikes and pedestrians, you know, so that you're not, as much as possible, you know, you have protected paths for both. I think a lot of what can help with that, though, is making sure that you've got vibrant pathways through a city that, you know, feature places that people want to go and are able to go on foot. I think, you know, a big part of why we see so many people in cars is that so much is not located in Brisbane. So you've kind of got to go out of town, or you've got to drive far afield. I know for my family, one example is we wanted to, you know, bicycle out at Sierra Point, but there's really no safe way to get there, especially with children, without a car.
Thank you. And Terry?
So Brisbane, because of its steep terrain, has a lot of access difficulties, especially for seniors, and we are an aging population. Brisbane had to fight just to keep the 292 bus, the only bus that goes to Hillsdale Shopping Center, which is now mostly closed, or San Francisco. We don't have access to our train, and we are really reliant on county subsidized programs. So we need to try to figure out a way to tap into county resources, find electric shuttle buses, make businesses that are coming into town run those buses. Genentech has been doing a great job in South City, but they've had their feet held to the fire to get people out of their cars. But until we have more central transportation for that last block, we're not going to get people out of their cars.
Thank you. And Madison?
So the city has prioritized walkability. We developed the safe routes to school enhancements so that children can safely get to school. For walkability throughout Brisbane, again, part of that is our terrain. We can enhance and invest better in our network of stairs. That's a great way to enhance walkability. Public transit, there's not a ton we can do. Again, it was a huge fight to keep the 292. But I keep saying this, and it's true, that Baylands is ripe with opportunity. We've talked to the developer about maybe there could be a shuttle network, and that shuttle network can drop people off at the ridge, Brisbane and Baylands, and be able to provide better transit within Brisbane, along with a system of trails that can do a better job of connecting all parts of Brisbane together, which will help us develop a stronger community.
Thank you. This next question will go to Terry first. What are some ways the city can help support seniors aging in place?
Right at this time, transportation is one of the biggest things, and having senior transportation available. We have partnered with Brisbane Helping Hands. We have members of our community that reach out for our seniors, and we have supported and built the senior housing. Granted, that was a long time ago, and there's a waitlist, but there are those opportunities to have more of that type of housing. And I think that it really is a community event, not a city necessarily event, but a community event, to help our neighbors, help our citizens, watch out for your older neighbors.
Madison?
Brisbane Village Helping Hands is an organization that does just that, and the city funds that organization every year, which, if I'm elected, I intend on continuing. The city could prioritize the development of more senior housing and retaining programs like Agile Aging. I would love to have enhanced, an enhanced senior center one day where seniors could drop in for socializing, classes, art, and just more regular activities. And I think it would be wise, maybe if we could develop a senior committee or some type of advisory group where the seniors could tell us, what's important to you? What do you want? I'm here with open arms, open ears, and I'd love to better serve you.
Thank you. And Anthony?
Yeah, so I'd love to see an expansion of senior housing. I've heard from folks about that waitlist, and it's a concern. There are definitely seniors locally who are waiting for that and can't really afford the place they're in. I'd, you know, I think the community just checking in with each other is great. You know, sometimes all it takes is a friendly face and a little help. I'd also, though, like to see seniors prioritized for electric infrastructure updates with, you know, battery backup and that sort of thing. You know, often there are medical equipment that, you know, really can't go down in a blackout and really is a life-or-death situation, and I would love to see seniors prioritized for that kind of modernization.
Thank you. This question will go to Madison. How will you balance overwhelming outside interests like high-speed rail against the quality of life in Brisbane?
We need to have a formidable team. I mean, that's the way that we come out of this on top. There's only so much I can discuss about this strategy because high-speed rail can pull this recording, and for Brisbane's sake, I want to keep it as brief as possible. But our current council is really entrenched in high-speed rail, and we've already identified a number of compelling points that we can use to demonstrate how this plan is infeasible, unreasonable, and a detriment to Brisbane. Because Terry and I have been working on this issue extensively and have been part of several closed-session meetings on the issue, we're the most prepared to lead Brisbane to a successful outcome.
Thank you. Anthony?
So on high-speed rail, to be clear, I'm a proponent of, you know, efficient, safe, affordable public transportation. I support high-speed rail in California, but I, the proposed high-speed rail yard in Brisbane just seems like a very bad fit for the community and an environmental disaster waiting to happen. They're talking about, you know, cutting into what's the site of an unregulated dump. You know, we're talking about thousands of tons of old garbage being transported out of the city, potentially through the city, to other cities, you know. None of that seems like a good idea. And I really worry about the proximity to any future Baylands development. You know, that seems quite problematic for future residents. They'll have, you know, noise pollution, light pollution, you know, and I think we've all seen how sound bounces around, and here, I think we'll get a lot of that, too. So it's, I'm very much against it.
And Terry?
It's hard to say how there will be a balancing act between a rail yard, high-speed rail, and the city of Brisbane and its livability. It is going to be messy. And while I don't think that the council believes that they're going to stand in the way of the train and stop the train, we cannot be the dumping ground of San Francisco again. We were the dumping grounds for their garbage. We've been their dumping ground for their current garbage. We can't be it again. So we need to find a better way, relocate the high-speed rail yard in another location that won't have the detrimental effects on our wildlife, our wetlands, and on Brisbane itself.
Thank you. And the next question goes to Anthony first. What do you perceive is the biggest issue surrounding the planning at the Baylands?
Yeah, so to me, it really is, you know, the environmental issues that go into it. It's, the remediation seems like the biggest one. You know, it needs to be thorough and exacting if we want to have people out there. And that has to be handled very carefully. But, you know, I believe it's also a massive opportunity if executed well. I, you know, I can see, you know, zero-carbon affordable housing businesses, you know, going in on Brisbane's terms. We're talking about, you know, new shops and amenities, parks and trails, all that would benefit Brisbane, potentially a high school, you know. But, you know, as I say, we're talking about, you know, doubling, potentially tripling the size of the city, so it has to be taken seriously and, you know, done in a way that'll be safe for everyone.
Terry?
So hands down, it's the toxics and cleaning them up. But the other big thing is the cost to Brisbane that it doesn't bankrupt us or our water system. We need to make sure that, I mean, it's going to be difficult for the Baylands to achieve zero financial cost to the city of Brisbane with the massive amounts of cleanup and the infrastructure that needs to be put in. So every, every bit that we can condense to make sure that the prices aren't so astronomical that no one... that no one can afford to live there and no one can afford to build it. So we really need to make sure that the financial stability is built in before they start making us promises they can't keep.
Thank you. Madison?
Well, as everyone has already said, remediation is a huge, huge concern. I think we're still grappling with everything that's out there and just how you try to tackle a problem that big. But it's also liquefaction. If you've ever taken a drive on Tunnel Road, you know what I'm talking about. I'm concerned about big buildings being out there and having an earthquake. And what's that going to do? What's that going to do to all of those buildings out there? So liquefaction is a problem. Sea level rise is also a big problem. We get one chance to do this right, and that requires a keen understanding of the toxins and how the land is going to perform during an earthquake. Teri and I have studied this extensively on the council, but also through our positions on the Brisbane community advisory, Brisbane Baylands Community Advisory Group. And ultimately, I think, at the end of the day, it's also got to feel like Brisbane. I want to look out there and visit the Baylands and be proud, be proud that it's Brisbane and have it feel like Brisbane.
Thank you. Continuing with Baylands, this question will go to Teri. How would a significant but unavoidable sea level rise affect any plans of the Baylands?
Well, I'm sure that the developer will tell you that they're planning for that. But we need to make sure that they are and hold their feet to the fire. A lot of the concerns are that sea level rise will mix with the toxins and create a slurry that is something we don't even know what it's going to be. When you add salinity to a chemical, you may get another chemical that may be more corrosive. So I think the safety of how they remediate and then how they build is going to be the biggest concern. Because we know sea level rise is coming. We know that those are going to be issues that we need to deal with. And having infrastructure and buildings and toxic remediation that works with that is going to be really important.
Madison?
I think it depends on how significant is the sea level rise. Because we know that there will be some, and we're planning for that. But I think that we have to have worst-case scenarios built in. We have to plan and then also know what's the plan of action if this is beyond our expectations. How do we grapple with that? How do we solve that? As Teri mentioned, significant sea level rise beyond what we've prepared for completely jeopardizes the remediation that's been done and can jeopardize the cap. So it's, it's serious. This is such a multi-layered problem. And it's going to require all of us putting our heads together.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yes, I mean, I think, you know, sea level rise, it's not really a question of if, but when and to what degree. You know, and I think it's got to be a, you know, the city working with the developer to, you know, take prudent steps to guard as much as possible against it. But it's, you know, many of these things, it's sort of unknowable. So you can, you try to plan as well as you can and, you know, put in robust systems. But, you know, it's definitely a serious issue that's got to be carefully considered when, you know, the remediation happens, when all of the buildings are going in. They've got to be built to withstand as much as they possibly can.
Thank you. This question will go to Madison. What is your perspective on Brisbane's Parkside Plan?
I'm really passionate about the Parkside Plan. I had the pleasure of working on it. I think that it's smart to develop housing, especially affordable housing, around our community park. That's what creates walkable communities. I think we should definitely re-envision how we're utilizing the village that, that shopping center needs to undergo a remodel, and that's included in the Parkside Plan. And then I think that we could look at introducing the Bank of America parcel as part of the Parkside Plan and have extensive community outreach to really define what does the community envision for that parcel. To me, the Parkside Plan, besides the Baylands, is one of the most ideal ways that we can enhance our affordable housing stock.
Teri?
Well, I did have the pleasure of working on this plan in its infancy with Councilmember Davis. And it was the first project that we came together on and actually saw eye to eye and found a way to come together and solve an issue that we were having and, and take something that others were working on and, and make it better, in my opinion. And right now, we just need to find the incentives to work with the owners of the property to see what can make them want to upgrade their property to housing for that need. Most property owners want their building to be upzoned. And while that's a terrible word to use, it is a reality that it would make their property more valuable, but it would make it different. And we need to convince them that that is the preferred use for Parkside.
And Anthony?
Yes, sir, I think the Parkside development is a great idea. I've, you know, I've reviewed the plans and, you know, that immediately sort of put a smile on my face. I thought, you know, I'd like to see that. The, my understanding is that it's sort of fizzled because of, you know, a lack of interest from commercial property owners. So, you know, that's, that's something to be dealt with. But I think something along those lines, a robust commercial and housing corridor, even, you know, over time, perhaps extending out toward the ridge could, you know, be, be something that, that could help connect the city in interesting ways and be a real, a real boon ultimately.
I know you all love Brisbane. This question will go to Teri first. What do you think is Brisbane's biggest weakness and why?
I think one of the biggest weaknesses is that we are the north end of San Mateo County. We are one of the less economically advantaged communities. And we're small, so we have less clout and less weight when it comes to getting county resources. And also that we are the neighbors to the south of San Francisco, and they feel that they can bully us. And I think that our strength is that we aren't going to be bullied anymore and that we have a passion in this town to make sure that it doesn't happen.
Thank you. Anthony?
Yeah, I think, you know, speaking from the perspective of a resident, it's, to me, you know, a lack of amenities is a big one. I know, you know, we're so close to San Francisco, Daly City, South San Francisco, that in many cases, if there's not something here, you know, I think people naturally kind of go somewhere else to get it. The supermarket's a really good example, you know. And I think in a lot of ways, it's a real shame. It, I would love to see a lot of that, you know, activity stay in Brisbane and really benefit the city, benefit all of us. You know, I think it would make, you know, putting things that people need closer to home, I think will also, in many ways, be a good climate solution. You know, they don't have to travel quite as far to get the things that they need. They're less likely to jump in a car and do it.
And Madison?
I would say our size is our biggest weakness. Our size is what contributes to those lack of amenities. We don't have a population to support a supermarket. Forty-two hundred people, it's not going to happen. And while our size absolutely creates this incredible small-town feel and connectedness, which I would never trade for anything, it also makes us a target. San Francisco, Sacramento, and high-speed rail know that we have a much smaller budget than other cities. And that's why we are perpetually in a David and Goliath situation. And they think that because we are a small town, that they can intimidate us and they can push us around. They think that the rest of the world won't care what happens to us because they can create chaos for a town of forty-two hundred people. And that's a small price to pay for the benefit of millions of Californians having high-speed rail. If elected, I will fiercely defend us and do everything in my power to protect our quality of life and what our, why our small size makes us so special.
So that we adjourn on time, this next question will be the last one. And it goes to Anthony. The question is, tell us how your experience living in Brisbane has helped you understand the local issues that are most important to its residents? And why do you feel you are best equipped to respond to those issues and direct improvements? Would you like me to repeat it? Tell us how your experience living in Brisbane has helped you understand the local issues that are most important to its residents? And why do you feel you are the best equipped to respond to those issues and direct improvements?
Sure. Well, so how, how living in Brisbane has helped me understand its issues has really just been getting to know the people who live here, hearing, you know, what their concerns are. And, you know, being a part of the community. I've, you know, been here with my family for about five years. And, you know, we've, we've been really interested to see, you know, you know, the Baylands, the water issues, this newest one with, with high-speed rail. It's, you know, it's a really vibrant community, and it's been, you know, fascinating to see. I think from, you know, to my mind, the biggest issue in front of us, though, is the climate crisis. It, you know, we have got a lot of work to do to, you know, reach our greenhouse gas emissions goals. And, you know, our family, living in an all-electric home and having made that transition ourselves, I think we've got a lot to offer.
Thank you. And Madison?
Well, I am the only candidate that has been born and raised in Brisbane. And with that comes an understanding of our history and a respect for our traditions. I love Brisbane with every fiber of my being. I am Brisbane. During my two terms on the council, I fought for the best interests of our city. And now, more than ever, Brisbane will benefit from having me at the table as we negotiate with high-speed rail and BDI. I have a deep understanding of the issues and will soon deliberate, and that we will soon deliberate, and a tenacity that the city will benefit from when outsiders attempt to push us around. I have prepared for this moment for the last seven years, and I won't need to learn on the job during a time when we cannot afford to fail.
Thank you. Teri?
When I first came to Brisbane, I got tutelage from some of the best environmental activists that were here. And I learned on the ground, from the ground, pulling weeds, up on the mountain, enjoying the beauty, and seeing what there is to lose. We can't afford to lose that, and we need to stay strong and fight for it with every fiber in our being.
Thank you. We are now at closing statements. Each candidate will have two minutes for a closing statement. We will reverse the order from that of the opening statements. So we will begin with Anthony.
So I'd like to again thank the Brisbane Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, and every candidate up here and everyone who watched and submitted questions. This is what democracy looks like. So thank you sincerely for being a part of that. You've gotten to know each of us a little bit better here tonight. And I hope that some of what I've said here has resonated with you. Your vote is powerful, and it will determine where our city and our country go from here. It's incumbent upon the city to facilitate and accelerate the net-zero transition for every member of this community to the greatest extent that it can. Proactive and transparent community outreach about electrification incentives, rebates, and other programs will be crucial. And the city must do everything it can to ensure community members on fixed and limited incomes are able to participate fully. The transition must be for everyone. If elected to city council, I will do my utmost to faithfully represent you and view every issue our city faces as a potential opportunity to improve life here for all of us. I will work to maintain our city's character while delivering on effective solutions that support a just, sustainable transition and a brighter future for every member of our community. I will advocate for equality of life for current and future residents, not just equal to what we enjoy today, but better. My name again is Anthony Walker. You have two votes this election, but I humbly ask you for one of them so that I may serve your interests on the council and aid in ushering in the brighter future that we all deserve. Thank you.
Teri?
So when I was first elected to the city council, I thought my role would be the environmentalist, protecting San Bruno Mountain and open space from overdevelopment. Over the years, I've learned that there is so much more to being an effective council member. And that while my environmental stance has not changed, I now understand our other goals and priorities. Understanding the financial needs of the city, determining what is critical, and finding a way to pay for those needs must be carefully weighed and balanced. Future pension obligations, existing bonds, police, and fire have to come first. Now my priorities are to protect the very fabric of Brisbane. Changes are being proposed from high-speed rail and others that will upend our community and make changes that are unimaginable. Brisbane must be strong, resilient, and cohesive in determining our future. I will advocate and fight for Brisbane and respectfully request your vote. Thank you.
And Madison?
I want to thank the Chamber and League of Women Voters for hosting this event. If there's anything I want you to take away from tonight, it's this. As your future councilperson, I am committed to listening to all of you. I will ask the hard questions, and I will look at issues from every angle. I have a proven ability to collaborate with our city's staff, determine a common ground, and develop solutions. This will be an asset to the city council as we face crucial decisions. We need someone who understands Brisbane's traditions and values. I am committed to advocating for our aging population by supporting programs that help seniors age in place. I will continue supporting young families and the development of more constructive outlets for our teens. I will be alive to experience what happens at the Baylands. And I am not only invested in this project because it will shape our city, but because it will directly impact me and the family I will one day raise here. That is why I'm committing to advocating for what's right for Brisbane. The Baylands is full of opportunity. I envision a development that harnesses innovative technology and planning techniques to create a sustainable community that embodies Brisbane's small-town charm. I will advocate for extensive transportation and trails, engaging parks and open space for vitalized wetlands, and a thriving retail district. I will hold the developer and regulatory agencies accountable, demanding the highest remediation possible. I want the Baylands to be safe, reflect our values, and incorporate the vision of residents. However, the future of the Baylands and Brisbane's entrance to town hangs in the balance. If high-speed rail gets their way, we will have a massive maintenance yard that brings 24/7 noise and light, not the development we desire. At this time, it is crucial to elect someone with extensive knowledge of the issues. I have studied thousands of pages of reports during my terms on the council in preparation for upcoming deliberations. With your support, I will continue to make Brisbane a special place to live. I would be honored to serve again and respectfully ask for your vote.
Thank you. You can find additional information about the candidates on the League of Women Voters Edge website, votersedge.org. All candidates have been invited to enter their information and to link to their own websites. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization, and membership is open to people of all ages and genders, 16 years of age and up. Not all ages, 16 years of age and up. If you are interested in helping in your community with forums such as this or other activities that encourage civic education and involvement, brochures are available at the back, right outside the room, with information about joining the League. the back, right outside the room, with information about joining the League. For those who are watching on television, check the League website. Ballots will be mailed on October 10th. October 24th is the last date to register and get a non-provisional ballot. Note that you can register to vote up to the day of the election, but you will have to submit a provisional ballot. Remember to vote on Tuesday, November 8th, and encourage others to vote as well. Now, in conclusion, please join me in applauding and thanking the candidates for coming this evening and for running for a seat on the Brisbane City Council.